I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. This is a July meeting. We are going to try to make it fast. So let's start with, do we have anyone here for public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we will table the remainder of the public comment time to the end of the meeting. Let's choose school board member updates. Does anybody have anything? Nope. Alright, that is great. And we are skipping administrative reports this month because it is July. Look forward to seeing you guys again in August. So I vote we can skip down to introductions under new business.
So thank you, principals, for being here this evening. Also, I want to introduce Deana Jensen, who is our new people services director. So, welcome, Deana. Deana was a people service director in Auburn. She was also, most recently, in North Hampton. And she also brings with her a great background as a former school psychologist for many, many years. So we're really lucky to have her. And she had an opportunity for some transitional time with Dr. Lois De Silva Napton. And she was able to join us on July 1. Actually, she came in on Monday, June 30 to get set up. And we're really just happy to have her, and she's hitting the ground running. So, welcome, welcome.
Congratulations. Welcome. Alright, WHS graduates.
Yep, so as you know, from my board report last month, I had the opportunity to attend Wyndham High School graduation. And it was great to see so many of our former students who were proudly up on the stage, whether they were serving as the student body president, or they were just the valedictorian, Wes Granger. The slutatorian is Skylah Mace. Really proud of them, as well as Emma Roy and Alex Bachtelder in the top 10. And we have sent out letters on behalf of the district just to recognize that they've made such great accomplishments, and they're off to do wonderful things. And we can't wait to see what they do. Wes is off to Princeton. Skylah is off to UVM to play sports and also to continue her studies. And we have no doubt they're going to do amazing things. So it's just a great feeling to see them there and to see them on their way and see move on to higher education. So, pretty proud.
That's great. Summer updates.
So right now, we're in the middle of our leadership retreat. We are actually gathering up at the Kerry Cottage in Portsmouth, which is a lovely little spot. It's on the backside of the Wentworth. It is a nonprofit organization. We were there last year. If anybody's ever looking for a place to convene, it is just a lovely spot. It's quiet, yet it's big enough for the 12 of us. And we've had two very full, productive days where we are concentrating on reflecting back on the school year, but also looking ahead to what we want to be thinking about for the future. We know that last year, we piloted the math. So this year, we'll be implementing a new math program. We are also working with the state on multi-tiered systems of support, thinking about our students and how we can ensure that we're being mindful of the data and that we are responding to our students' needs through those tiers of support. So that's also a focus of ours. We are talking about communication. I know that is one of our ongoing goals that I know we will continue to talk about. And we're excited to think about how we want to expand that goal. I know that we typically, in August, September, we reconvene that work. And you help as a board to establish those goals for the school year. And then I report out on them on a monthly basis. So if you remember back in May-June, I gave you that grid with the goals and our progress into what end we were covering them, but looking for your feedback to figure out, you know, what are those next steps? What are those next directions? How can we continue to ensure that we're doing everything we can as a school to meet the needs of our students and our staff, but also our community? So, looking forward to those conversations. And I know Andrea, you're on the steering committee. But as we know, these are open meetings. People are welcome. We love to have community members. We love to have teachers. So in August, I will be sure to bring those dates and make sure that people are aware of it so that we can be sure to get those on the calendar early.
And we, in the past, we've had parents that have attended those meetings. We just need to, we'll just make sure everybody's aware.
It's kind of interesting who shows up. We get community members sometimes, like Jerry Zanoy showed up last year. It was interesting. We have had parents show up. We have staff show up. We have board members show up. We have, obviously, administrators show up. But we do our work in the summer, and then we bring them to you and to the stakeholders and say, "Help us to shape and craft them." So, looking for your input. And I always appreciated one board member who would say to me, "What's new? How are you changing it? How are you moving the needle?" And it makes us really rethink our work to make sure that we're being mindful of what are we doing differently if we want different results. So, always appreciate that comment. And it's something we always are thinking about as we work through those. And as you know, Center School is quite in upheaval and mark. I'm sure you can attest to that. The old part is completely under construction. As we are looking at the HVAC system, we're really excited that that project is underway. I know for our facilities manager, Tim Harrington, it's been a huge undertaking. And he is often there overseeing it. We have had, unfortunately, students or families not realize that it was under construction. And we've had children, we have found, wandering the hallways used in the bathrooms. And we're like, whoa, whoa, whoa. So we've been having to just let people know that it is a construction zone. There is a lot going on right now. And just trying to make sure we have it done for the start of school year. So, excited about that, too. So that's underway as well. An extended school year is in and it's running. And kids are here. And we're making sure those children that need that extra boost in the summer, they're getting that as well. Although it's the summer, there's certainly enough that's keeping us all very busy.
So does anybody have any questions for Dr. Costa about what's going on in the summer? Alright, now we're going to talk about the Rosemary Bueller? Am I saying that name? Memorial Education Fund.
Yep. So, Rosemary Bueller was a longtime educator, having over 30 years in the school district. And I had the pleasure of working under her. She was one of my staff members. And sadly, last year, she passed away. Kind of unexpected and very sad. And her daughter has decided that she wants to create a memorial education fund in her name and has set up an account through Citizens Bank where she has collected quite a bit of money. And so every year, she wants to award this money to a new teacher. So, we have spoken, and Jay McKenna is also on that committee. I don't know if people remember Amber Peacock Buttermore, a former 4th grade teacher, is also on the committee. Nathan Sadler would be on the committee. And Elizabeth Henderson, who also taught with Rosemary Bueller, to think about the criteria so that we can award a new teacher every year, that $250 plus some other little goodies that Stephanie wants to give to the new teacher coming on. And just as a way of remembering her mom and doing something for a new teacher entering the profession. So, just wanted to make you aware of this happening. Nathan Sadler, I don't mean to catch you off-guard. Is there something that, I know we're trying to... Yep. Yep. And what we'd like to do, and what Stephanie would like to do, is, you know, once we decide on who it is, we'd like to do it publicly at a board meeting to recognize this person in her mom's name and just to, you know, make that public announcement, which I told her I'm in full support of. As long as I'm sitting here, I think it's a wonderful thing. And I'm just happy to be able to help facilitate it and contribute. So, so just wanted to make you aware of that regarding Rosemary Bueller's contribution and Memorial Education Fund.
Alright, now we are going to revisit school lunch prices. So in the June meeting, excuse me, Mariah and, sorry, we should actually let the public know that Mary Borg is calling in remotely. She is available to the, I don't know that anybody can see her on screen, but she is available to the school board on a laptop, sort of sitting right in front of us. And so, Mary and Mariah are going to basically talk to the board about what they would like to do with lunch prices next year.
Do you want me to facilitate? Do you want to go down there and facilitate?
Yes, whichever.
I'll do that.
Okay.
We're going to find out, right?
Yep.
Alright, Mary, can you hear us?
Do you hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright. Do you want to...
Do you want to give us a little update as to what you're thinking?
Okay, so, hi, everybody. So last month, we were speaking about the lunch prices, the cost. Currently, we charge for lunch $3.50. I would like to bring it up to 15 cents more, $3.65. Um, we just, we don't have to go up. We can go up a dime, $3.60, or we can leave it at $3.50. Uh, I think, Mariah, you were going to check with the PLE tool?
Yep. So I just sent you guys the PLE tool to state report that we have to do, that we fill out, that gives us, it's an Excel spreadsheet, and it gives us guidance on what we should do. But before I get to that piece, I wanted to give you some information. The first piece of sheet that I gave you in this packet is a breakdown, a little bit of history of food service since SEU 90 started. So I did January of 2013, January of 2020, which was right before COVID, and January of this past year. So, I did the number of free lunches served, the number of reduced lunches served, the number of paid lunches served, and the total number of lunches served, number of days in that month. And then I took that and divided it out and came up with the number of lunches served per day. And then you see the number of students. That's the number of students we had total for that year at that time. So, averagely, we are serving less lunches. We are, we have less students. But averagely, it seems that we are pretty close to serving the same percentage since 2013. Nothing's really changed. And then from there, I kind of broke it down by the three years again. Average cost of a loaf of bread, if you see that, for the three years. Oh, lunch rates start. So, in 2013, we were charging $2.50. 2020, we were charging $3. And we are charging $3.50 right now. So that is, and then I did average cost of bread for the three years, and then the average food server worker rate for the three years. And you can see that the lunch rate has only gone up 28%, 28.5%. And then bread's gone up 45%, almost 46. And our workers' rate is about 30% that it's gone up. And then I broke it down a little bit more so that you kind of could see. In 2013, we had a loss of 18,322. And in that loss, the director's food service salary was in that. Because we used to have the food service director's salary in the actual food service accounts. It was the expense in there. There was a debate. And right around 2021, we removed it from food service and put it in our general fund. So, in 2020, we had a, and this is why we moved it, it started to rise really high, 63,616 loss. And then this year is 21,445 loss. So, that's just a little bit of information for you for to kind of decide what we want to do with the rate. But, I also have a little bit more information to help make your decision. So, when COVID happened, we had a year and a half, about two years, where all students ate free. And doing so, all students got to eat free. We got to charge, and they gave us more money for each lunch than what we actually would have charged. So, we got a fund balance in 2021 and have had that fund balance for the past few years. And what that does, it helps with any equipment that needs to be purchased, high milk prices. It offsets some of that. So, um, so when I'm saying we do have a loss, we have a loss, but we have a fund balance that will cover that this year. And that fund balance, as of the beginning of this year, was $134,889. So, could that technically cover a few more years? Yeah, it probably could. But, I don't know if I would count that money because they can change the laws about how we utilize those funds in any moment, right? So, right now, we can utilize it, but year to year, you're not sure. They change the laws all the time. But it's there as of today. And we can, I don't have to take fund balance money from us and move it and transfer into that to cover it this year. So, that's one item. The next thing is if I sent you the PLE tool, it does say that the average price paid lunch for $24.25 was $4.01. And then if we go into the spreadsheet, I gotta find where it is. It's showing that we actually should be charging $3.71 to $3.70. And we're charging $3.50. And they just, they do that with the Consumer Price Index. They do it with a weighted average. They do it with our weighted averages. We have to fill this out every year. And then with this form, we have to fill out another sheet that says, your board or whomever is, can vote in your district on, are you going to increase? Are you going to leave it the same? If you're going to leave it the same, are you going to put funds into transfer to cover it? Or are you in a positive balance? So, because we have that fund balance, I can say, we are not in the negative. We can, we don't have to put our rates up this year. However, if we keep going like this and we don't slowly bring them up, we might hit a point where it's going to be charging maybe 50 cents all at once. That's the only thing I'm afraid of. That's why they do this. That's why they suggest 5 to 10 cents every year at that. There's been multiple years we haven't done it. But then, right after, right before COVID and right after COVID, right during that COVID time, after the free lunches, we had to put it up like 20 cents, I think, at once. And that's a hard hit, too. So, I guess it's kind of a discussion that you guys should talk about. But I just wanted to give you a bunch of information to kind of work it through.
I have some questions.
Yep.
So, the average price, that 401, is that average national or is that average state?
Ah, so let's see, it's guidance. It was in the guidance, it says, oh, sorry, I put it.
I want to say it's state, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to say state.
So this would increase in theory. Sorry, for the public, we are going to have a little bit of echo because of Mary's thing, which is fine. Looks like this would only increase our revenue.
Revenue.
A little over $1,100 a year. I mean, I guess, is it worth it, is what I wonder? It's just not that much for us. Do we, sorry, I guess the rest of my thought on that is, if we increase what we charge, does that increase what we receive? No.
They have a set rate that they give us for what they feel is...
My other questions were this. So, we've got the fund balance up here, the $135,000, basically. Is this, so this, sorry. So, what I wanted to see is, so this $21,000...
Hey, Nick, I can't hear anything.
Sorry. I'll lean in and talk a little louder. Is that better?
Is that better?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry. So I'm looking at basically the ledger sheet that Mariah gave all of us that has essentially the fund balance at the top and then all of the food service numbers below it. And then a $21,000, is that a $21,000 balance?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to see.
Our loss.
And that's, is that after we include the $134,000? Or we can, in theory, use that to offset it?
Exactly. I can, in theory, offset it with that amount of money.
Okay.
I was just double-checking. I just left it separate.
Yep.
Like I said, this year, we can, laws change, but they do let us rule food service fund balance every year so that it's there. We did utilize it last year. So, technically, if we were going at the same rate every year, we could, we would be fine for the next four years. But then what happens when that money's gone?
Yep.
Right? And then, and then you're looking, and everything is increasing, your food's increasing. Like, if you just look at that, that's, I mean, 50%, it's increased since 2013. And our lunches have, you know, only 29%. So we're definitely less than expenditures.
So what does everybody else think?
So just playing devil's advocate, because I certainly understand that, you know, our, first of all, our employees deserve every penny that they get and more. And we all go to the grocery store, so we know that costs are going up. But to Wendy's point, if we look at $1,100 annually, or if we look at the number here, which I, if I'm understanding this correctly, and I'm not a numbers person, but the $21,000 that you reference here, Mariah, if we were to look to community sport to raise that money, is that an option as well? And then we kind of, I know we're a bit of kicking the can down the road, but I just, I know for me, my initial reaction is a little bit reticent to put this on families right now, given how difficult times are at the moment. They may be more difficult in the future, but right now, it is difficult, too. So whether it's the $1,100 that Wendy referenced or the full 21 that you have here, is that an option for us?
So, yes. This is not, to be clear, this is not have anything to do with students, unpaid funds. This is totally different, right? Like, so take that out of it. That's not even included in this. We have to zero that balance out. We have to clean that up. That's, right? So if you even take that out, that averagely is $5,000 every year. On top of that. So, I, like I said, I think that we'd be able, we'd be fine the next few years. But if it keeps going like this and that fund is gone, and then all of a sudden, we're looking at it, we might be in a very worse spot. Like, that's the only thing I'm concerned about. I say, I'm like, if you want to do it for one year and not raise the rates for one year and see what happens with the economy and stuff, I, fine. Like, I think we would be fine for one or two years. I just don't know how.
Long-term.
Yeah.
To piggyback off Candace's question, am I correct in interpreting this as if we were to have more students opting into school lunch, we would have less of a problem with the price? Would that offset?
So, I don't have the full numbers here of how much food was purchased, if there was any loss. Like, all of that does add up into that, right? To that number, that amount. But, yeah, I mean, if we, if we're, if we're not wasting any food, it shouldn't really matter if we have more because we'd have to buy more, right? Like, but if we're wasting the food, then yes. We need them, we need more students. I guess, and I, knowing Mary, I'm sure she does not, is not very wasteful. I'm sure.
And I think, I was just going to say, I think to answer Candace's question, which is sort of adjacent to this, I believe the answer is no. So, Mary, what Candace was sort of asking was about fundraising for the students that had a balance at the end of the year. And if I remember correctly, what you said at our last meeting is that when we receive donations, they go towards extra food for our free and reduced students. They do not directly offset those balances. Is that what I understood?
That money is strictly for extra food for our free and reduced kids.
Can you, sorry, we can't, now we can't hear you. Just talk louder. There you go, that's better.
I'm sorry, did you ask a question? I lost you again.
I was just clarifying. Candace was asking about fundraising as it relates to unpaid student balances. And I, what I remember you saying at the last meeting is that donations that we receive essentially for that go not towards the unpaid balance, but they instead go to the free and reduced students so they can receive extra food. Okay, she is, I can hear, but she's not.
Only the free and reduced kids. And when they get their extra food, their extra slice of pizza, snacks, whatever it be, that money goes towards those children.
Thank you. So just, sure. Oh, of course.
So I certainly would not want to be taking from any funds.
I would pull that closer.
She can't, she can't hear us. Sorry, Mary. So, I certainly wouldn't want to be pulling any funds from that because I know how important that is for those students who are really depending on that food source. Is there a pathway for us to look to the community first in terms of fundraising to make up this gap we're talking about here that isn't specifically tied to the kids who need the extra additional meals? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
So, donations and fundraising, there's, the law is changing this year. I don't know if anybody's looked at that RSA, but it is changing. And so if somebody even donates 50 cents, we have to have it approved by the board to spend. Like, it's going to be completely different. You'll be seeing a lot more things come through here for approval. Any, right? So, um, I would, I would, I could look into that because I don't know if there is a law about that or not. I would assume that anything that is given to the school, if there's guidance on the donation. So usually, if you get a donation, it's an amount. And they can tell you, if they tell you exactly what they want spent on it or spent how, then yes, we can utilize it in that form.
I just want to make sure I understand the $1,100 thing correctly. So if, if, if we were to have gone through this year with this increase, does that mean this balance would have been $20,300? Is that what it would have reduced down?
I'm going to interrupt because that's not a good number. That would have been $1,100 for the month of January.
Yeah, it's for January. I just was kind of, I just did a basic.
She gave us one month, sorry. That's my mistake. So in theory, probably more like $9,000 or $10,000? If you look at nine months of school.
Okay, that's helpful.
I mean, I don't think that putting up our rates by 5, 10 cents is going to keep us out of debt. But it's, the goal is to solely keep it going with the consumer index, right? Like, with the rate expenses. So you don't, so we're not sitting here going, all of a sudden going, "Oh, my goodness, we're not even going to be able to feed the kids. We're not going to be able to pay our bill." Like, that's the, why the state gives us the guidelines. That's why they give us the PNELE tool, just to keep us in... P N L E tool, just to keep us in, and if we're not gonna follow that guideline, they, that we have to sign off saying, we're gonna figure out how to, we're gonna transfer funds from our fund balance, we're gonna, we have to prove on how we're gonna cover that money.
Um, so far from conversation, I might change my mind, but I just feel like if we're thinking about long-term sustainability and not just how people feel this upcoming year who are directly affected, but we think about the people who are gonna be affected down the road continuously, if we kick the can down the road, we're harming our community more than making the tough decision now to try and reduce the bleeding.
Sorry. I was looking to see if you had something you wanted to say that was.
I, I tend to think we should not kick it down the road, especially because you said that, I believe you said, I believe I heard, that it's, uh, something about two dollars, uh, three dollars and seventy-one cents?
The state wants us to be at.
Yeah, they, they give us a guideline when I, I sent the tool to you. Um, their suggestion is around three dollars and seventy-one cents.
Right.
Um, I think that's too high.
Yeah, I do too.
I think, I think, I mean, I, I understand that we don't want to make it unsustainable or too much or way noticeable for, for parents that have multiple students or just, um, but I, I, I do feel that the, the tools here, I think that, um, we went many years without following that practice, and then all of a sudden it hit us. Um, so I'm more apt to say even five cents is, even if we did something little every, every year, um, helps.
I, I guess I would rather see us do five cents
Yeah.
every year for the next, you know, like, at least say for the next three years. It would be our policy, not policy, but it would be our.
I mean, I, we're still gonna have to cover difference, for sure.
Right, we are.
But I, if.
But it would be a little bit maybe more palatable if it's only five cents every year for the next three years.
So I re, I redid my math. So if you take daily lunch sales from all three schools and divide that up, divide that by three fifty, so lunch is three fifty, we have about almost ninety thousand, almost ninety-one thousand lunches a year. An extra fifteen cents would have been thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars, which with a deficit of twenty-one thousand, it's a little more significant than my, than my thousand dollars from both.
And, and we've already, like, tried to calm down food service, like, we pulled out huge salary amount
Yep.
that the budget's holding now, and so I think we're, I think we're slowly trying to keep it under control, for sure. Um, I, I agree, I don't think we should do anything drastic, but I think we should do, try to maintain it slowly.
Just so we can do the math for, like, potential impact for a family of, that's right on the precipice of free and reduced, say they have three kids, three school lunches every week, fifteen cents more per day, times three kids, times five days, two twenty-five additional per week, nine dollars extra per month, call it nine months of school, eighty-one dollars per year for a family of three.
And that was the five cents or the fifteen?
That was the fifteen cents.
Okay.
And I think that we really need to push this, I mean, Mary did a great, we've really been trying to push, trying to get everybody to do free and reduce. It's not just important to feed your kids and, and swell the pride of having to fill it out, but it also helps with grants, like, that's our title one, and that's, the, the state really utilizes those forms for whatever reason, for multiple purposes, and I think that we really need to just, um, even if you don't feel like you're gonna fall under that, just fill it out, just so that it's filled out. Um, but I think if we do have, if we can get a list for Mary at the beginning of the year of who might be, or who was on that list last year on that cusp, right? That we could focus maybe fundraising and helping get funds in advance for those, um, those students.
So can we ask that one of you guys speak to, I'm guessing it would be the attorney, to find out sort of what the legalities are around fundraising for food service? Does that make sense? Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Just to see what the deal is with it? All right. Do I have a motion? Would anybody like, would anyone like to make a motion related to the request? We could leave it as it is, we can increase it by five cents, by ten cents, by fifteen cents?
Okay, I'll start it. I'd like to make a motion to increase the cost of the lunches by five cents over the next three years, five cents, five cents, and five cents.
Do I have a second? Um, I think we should keep in mind that that may, we may have to revisit, right?
Oh, yeah.
Because that would get us to fifteen cents, but we may find
Totally.
three years from now that we're fifty cents behind.
I'm just setting that as a
Yes.
as a place to start
Yes.
so that we at least
Yep.
are moving forward.
Gotcha. Do I have any more comments, any more questions?
I think it's a little more palatable
For those families that are, we know, uh, everything is going up, so I think it's a great, it's a great compromise. Um, so I really appreciate that, and I, and I think it might be a little more bearable. So, thank you.
Agreed. All right, we write a vote? Okay, all in favor? All right. Thank you. Sorry. We'll get back to you, we can get back to regarding fundraising, and we'll speak to the attorney on that too. We'll be back next month.
How do I raise my hand? Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary. All right, goodnight. Bye.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Would it be possible, um, the principals here, and I really appreciate that, could they just give you a quick update on hiring, and then could they go?
Of course.
Are you okay with that?
I was, I felt bad.
Mariah, are you okay with that? I know you wanna roll over there.
I'm here all night, we're good.
You're here with me, so there, yeah. So maybe if, um, I just think that's important at this time of year, it's something we are obviously very mindful of, um, given all the critical shortages, so maybe Center, Marston, and then Hampton Academy, if you want to speak to it, and then you can be on your way. I know we've got some, some little faces in our audience too that.
I know, we should have done it the other way.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
Please seem content for the moment.
I don't know. Nope. There you go.
You guys really didn't want me to come up tonight.
That's right.
Um, so Center, right now, we are down one special ed case manager, um, did interview two applicants, um, last week, so might have to get a little creative with a statement of eligibility for special education, um, but, um, I'm working on that currently, and then I'm down two paraprofessionals right now. Uh, we do have an interview later this week, so hopefully that all goes well. Um, and then we're just looking into maybe other avenues to possibly put the word out there for paraprofessionals in the district, so, so that is where we're currently at.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Should we sing happy birthday?
That will not be necessary, but thank you.
Would you like to be serenaded?
I was serenaded earlier today, so it'll be good, multiple times, but thank you.
Once is enough.
I, I appreciate it. Um, hello, everyone. Um, at Marston, we're looking right now for two paraprofessionals, um, you know, spec- special education aides, um, to work with some of our students who are identified, and we're also looking for an A B A tech, which is an applied behavioral analyst. It's not something you necessarily, um, need to have a lot of experience with, but there is training available, but, um, you know, if you're interested, check out our Facebook page, our Apple tracks, um, there's links right on it, tell your friends, um, you know, if you want to get involved in the community, and it's great hours, it's great pay, it's a great working environment, so, um, if you know anyone, send them our way. Otherwise, we're fully stocked with professional staff, so it's just, um, dealing with those couple of hires right there. All right, fantastic, have a wonderful night.
Thanks, Nathan. Just sort of a reminder to the public that those, those positions are great for those moms whose kids have, have just gone back to work, and you're, you want to be there to get them off to school and be there to get them off the bus, it's a, it's a great schedule.
And we also, those pares, um, have the opportunity to pursue their associate's or bachelor's degree, um, if they're interested, we do have that program, so we also are working with the Digital Collaborative for Equity, so anyone that is, would like to finish their degree, we can help with that, they can be working in our district as a para educator in the meantime, so we'd like to just give a plug for that as well.
Yeah.
How are you guys? Happy summer. Um, so we had a late exit for a case manager, um, but, uh, we are looking to fill that position, um, which might shuffle some things around. Um, we're currently, uh, still don't have a position, oh, uh, we don't have any applicants for a chor- chorus teacher for next year, so, um, we're gonna have to think about a few things, maybe shake that up a little bit, but yeah, no applicants in the queue, and we're also down, uh, paraprofessionals as well, so, um, shortage there. Um, but yeah, if anyone knows any chorus teachers that want to come to Hampton Academy for a couple of months, it'd be great, put a little concert. Um, but that's pretty much it, that's what we got, yeah, sure.
Um, so do I just understand this correctly, if we don't find a chorus teacher, no chorus program next year?
No chorus program for the, for, as long as our teacher is out, we are looking at other alternatives, but yes, chorus could be not at the table if we don't have anyone to, anyone to teach it, and I don't think anyone wants me to teach it. So, yeah.
Uh, for requirements for the chorus teacher, this is oddly specific, but do you need to play the piano?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's basically, it's a long-term subposition.
Long-term sub through, uh, yeah, through the, uh, winter vacation. So, yes.
Will we doing auditions?
At the next board meeting, yes.
So yeah, if anyone knows anyone, please tell them to apply, email me. Um, yep. We had one applicant from New Jersey, she was not coming up.
Yeah, fair.
So.
Bummer.
But that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
I would say, yes, you guys should go
Yep.
run, run for the hills.
See you tomorrow.
All right, so, back to Mariah.
Back to me, I love this month, it's all about me.
Mm-hmm.
Not really. So, it's been really busy. We, the month ended, we had to get all of our last payroll completed, we had to get all our accounts cleaned up, everything expended out, um, so now we kind of have a final number for you. Um, however, I say kind of, because when the auditors come, we have to put G A S B in, so, um, when we do the school budget, it's, it's by, um, voted budget, and we have an expenditure, and that's what we can spend in end of day. But by law, we have to put in G A S B and do all that for the end of numbers, um, for the D O E twenty-five and for you and for our report. So what I'm giving to you is final numbers per budgeted amount. Um, so it'll probably be, G A S B's changed, the laws have changed this year, so I've gotta do at least three more reports that will adjust a little bit, but averagely, it's between ten to twenty thousand dollars difference, because we have to take payroll from prior year, payroll from July, um, some, um, depreciation and other things affect that number, but then I do a final number. So my goal is usually for you, is I give you my final number that I have for expenditures and revenues that does not change, um, other than those little adjustments that we have to do for G A S B. So what I ask is, um, to pick either a contingency amount or a return to taxpayers' amount, and then whatever the difference is, the other line item would just be adjusted by whatever the auditors suggest. Does that make sense? So what I'm gonna go through is, um, we had, so this is our third year? Third year that we could add, um, retainage funds in. And we voted on that, um, in two thousand and twenty-three, and it passed, and we are allowed to retain a five percent of our fund balance. And this year, um, we can retain up to one million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Last year, we retained five hundred and eight thousand, seventy-nine dollars, and we, um, gave to the taxpayers two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So my, so if we then look at what I have for this year, I broke down all of our revenues, and I, and, um, what I try to do is always return revenues, no matter what. Um, and the revenues were tuition, um, interest on our income, which was interest on our bank account, and that was high because we still have the H V A C funds in there. Um, rental for facilities, cat aid, which is sped aid now, Medicaid, which was a little double than what we normally get this year. Um, Kim Work is phenomenal with cat aid and Medicaid, she's just phenomenal. Um, I do not foresee us getting that next year. Um, E-rate funds, which we get for our, um, utilities, we, um, do reports on that and get funds back for that. So as much as we, um, have expenditures, we really try to do, um, things to get revenues in to re, to have return. Um, and then other state aid. So our surplus of revenues was two hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-six, eighty-eight. Then I would take my, um, five percent retainage, and that has to go back into fund balance. So what happens is every year I have to take that money, put it back into the fund balance, and redo the retainage. So that would go back in, um, to the fund balance. We have the revenues, the five percent from last year, and then the unassigned fund balance for this year. So that's two hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and ten sixteen cents. That, um, is on expenditures that we did, um, and most of it, multiple things. We had, um, a student for, that was out of district that we didn't utilize, we had transportation that went along with that, and then, um, some positions we could not fill. Um, with that said, some of the positions we could not fill, we had to hire, outsource, so that kind of offset, but you'll see my full-out report of the ins and outs, you'll see the accounts, some will be over, some will be under, but at the end of the day, that's what's left, um, in our unassigned fund balance. So with all those three items, it gives us nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and four cents as a fund balance. So now we have to decide what we want to keep for retainage and what we would like to return. So I, my suggestion is always to try to return about the same we do every year. Um, but I, I put it up a little bit this year, and, um, I was suggesting two hundred and fifty thousand to return back, and then put the rest into contingency fund, um, for multiple reasons. Um, if, if grant issues come up, we have that fund, that money to, to pay our pares that are in that grant. If boilers or other items break down, we have that money that is there, case of emerg- it's, uh, in case of emergency only, I cannot spend it unless I put a notice in the newspaper, put a notice out stating that I'm asking and requesting to utilize that money, and that we have a meeting here, you vote on it, I explain why, and then I let the state know. Like, there's, um, that's why I like this. Like, I can't just spend it, I have, have reasoning for it, and I have to prove it to you, and I have to let the public know. So, but I do think that we do need, um, a retainage. That's a little hefty. So that's my suggestion. You guys feel free to speak, ask questions.
I'd like to just, um, first off, this is, I know this is a lot of work at the time of year where she's being pulled in a million direction, but I think where there's so much uncertainty with what's going on with, um, with budgets and federal funding and everything else, um, I think, I think it's, um, I think it's a great, I think it's a great proposal, Mariah. I just wanna, um, first off, publicly thank you, because I don't think that sometimes, Mariah, um, she does have to sit there and do this hard work, and I know she, although many people are taking summer breaks, she will not get a break this summer, she will She will be completely swamped with doing the audit. She will be completely just straight out in trying to get everything in order, getting ready for the DOE 25, just all of the paperwork that is required of us, given the changing laws. So I really appreciate that. The only, the only thing I would say is that I think that it really provides for us a safety net. So should we need it, given what could happen in the next year, it's there, and then if we don't use it, we return it. It's not like it's, you know what I mean? It's just, it's for safety. It's because we can't know what we, we don't know what to expect, what will happen, given what's going on with funding in New Hampshire and everything else. There's just too many moving parts right now with laws and, you know, federal funds that we don't have access to right now and otherwise.
This, so this fund balance, do we build it? Does it roll over every year? Or do we?
So, so I have to pull it back in and then recalculate it. It can't, I can't put this money in and then keep adding to it.
Okay.
So like, the five hundred is getting brought back, and then we readjust. It, there is, it is a percentage of your budget, and there's a max amount that you can do every year, and it's recalculated, and the state actually gives me that amount. I don't calc, I know how to calculate it. I, I usually do. And then, they send us out a firm amount, like this is your drop-dead amount. And it's, it's also, the other reasoning why they did this is, there's a lot of ebbs and flows with budgets. So, it kinda, I, I try, like everybody, it, it's very hard to say, you're supposed to averagely give back one to two percent of your budget. That's, that's their suggestion, right? Sometimes that's hard to do. So this is another way to, the retainage was built another way that if you have that one year where you just cannot give money, you can return your retainage, right? Like, you can return some of your retainage as your fund balance. So, it kinda helps with that, that also. But no, we can't keep it and just keep padding it.
Okay. So this is essentially like what we'll have, like, for this year?
Yeah. And then, and then I'm not even, like, I could put all of it in there, and we still wouldn't max out. But I just, I think that, I, I feel revenue should always go back. We worked really hard to get those revenues, and that should go back to the town for sure. And, and I think just trying to, to do the return the same every year or close to is important.
A motion would be?
This?
To retain.
To retain.
Well, I would do the motion to return, because then that way, if, if, after the, I do GASB and such, if the, it could go either way. If it changes a little, then it's in the contingency piece.
Okay.
Versus the returning piece.
Right. So that's a set amount. Does that make sense?
It does.
So, does anybody have any more questions before we do anything else?
Before we vote to, to retain or return, are there any items on here? Like, I'm looking at the in-service training, right, for, for teachers. And I, I think I'm seeing a thousand dollars per school. Is that, I mean, is that enough? Like, should, are we retaining enough?
So those, so that would be during budget, right? So we'll look at this during, so you haven't done a budget process yet, right? So, at the end of the day, we, we do a zero-based budget, we start from zero. But when I give you the books, it will show you three years' worth of expenditures. And what we try to do is it changes all the time, and then things happen. But for me, I'm not, I don't manipulate where it goes. I put it where it belongs, so that we can, if there's overages, we can see where it is. It may, it may not be enough, but it may have, may be enough for the following year, right? So, right. So, at the end of the day, it's a bottom, bottom-line budget. So really, it's, it doesn't have to fall into the accounts that we suggest, but we really try to.
It's a, it's a really good question, Candace, because if you're watching it, you'll probably notice that Title II is going away, and that is professional development for teachers. So, the money that we would ordinarily have for teachers to do workshops, which is part of their CBA, is no longer in there. So all we have will probably be what's in our budget. So it's a great question. So it's something we'll have to think about.
We'll probably have that for when we're working, 'cause it's hard, because we do a budget a whole year in advance, and you don't know. It's a guesstimate, right? So that's why you see the overs and shortages, especially in special ed, because you don't know the students. You have a guesstimate, but you really don't know. And then you don't know what the, the cost is gonna be for the schools, and you guess five percent or ten percent or three percent. And, so it's a guesstimate, your best guess. And we really try to be, it's, it's been a really tight budget. This is the first year that we actually put a little extra in special ed. That's why we have such a higher fund balance that I, we've had since I've been doing this in the past five years. Next year will not be like that. We did not do that. So, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see what happens with all the grant stuff, but I think you're gonna like the, the budget process pretty, it's, it's so much fun.
So basically, when we do budget, every single thing on all of these pages, we go through every single one, and we look to see what we budgeted in previous, previous years, what was spent in previous years, and then the recommendation from administration on what they wanna see in that year. So we'll go through every single one. It's great. Takes a long time. Mark out, mark out evenings in October and November.
Four to five evenings.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, do I have a motion to return two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the taxpayers of Hampton?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any more questions before we vote? All in favor?
Thanks, Mariah.
Yeah, I think, if you don't mind, I'll do Tim's stuff too.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yep.
For ya? All right, so, after all of the fund accounts, there is a facility sheet. And we just wanted to touch base to let you know that the HVAC project's going well. They opened up the walls and floors, and they've been cutting out duct chases and everything. There's been hiccups, but at the end of the day, they've been working through them. So it's been, it's been good. We are working on the neckroom at Marson School. That's being built. They do the little cubbies. It's coming, it started. Working on some new flooring and replacing some flooring that's been hazardous. And then, heh, heh, I just can't. The irrigation system died at the academy. So all of a sudden, the grass was starting to just die, and nothing was looking good, and we found that out this week. So we're working on that for the academy. And then, the, the dam at Bachelor Pond, we have Apex working on that to go through and come up with a plan and what needs to be completed and when, and a timeline to keep us with state guidelines. We had the state come in last year when we had a rainstorm, and there was a pothole, and they decided that there was a little bit issue with the dam. So we've been trying to work through that and clean up and stuff with the dam. So we've, we've just been trying to, I don't think it's anything major. It's just trying to keep us up to date. There's just gonna, if we're, if we decide to keep the water fill and stuff, we have to dig dirt, clean out some of the grass, maybe put some new benches in so that people can't park in certain things, so that it doesn't affect the way that the sand is being moved. But he's just working on that right now. So the dam's been, we're coming up with a timeframe and a timeline how what needs to be completed for state regulations.
How soon will this be starting?
Yes. It should, it started.
It is starting.
Yep. Yep.
So it just came out of the facilities budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And we do need to talk more about this, but we need to actually get it up.
We need to, we should really talk about the property.
We need to put it on the agenda.
Maybe we should put that on.
I know. There's so much in September.
I'm kicking the can down the road, but we've got so much on August and September with schools starting.
Yep.
Can we?
Maybe plan it for October.
Try through October?
And I think the next conversation actually will be fairly short, because I think the conversation needs to be what we want to do, and then we need to go and talk to the select board and find out what they want to do. We, we did, we did get a letter that sort of directed us to go to, I, I'm sorry, who is, what's his name? I know it. Jason, yes.
Jason, yeah, Jason Bashand.
Yeah.
We asked him, and he said it definitely needs to go in front of the select board as opposed to the planning board.
Okay. So we just need, we're basically looking for a place to start, and we need to find out what is the town, what are the towns' thoughts on it? Does the town want the property? Should it go to conservation? Do they want to buy it from us? REC has some, has expressed some minor amount of interest in it. But, yeah, we need a, a bigger conversation, and then to decide sort of what we're gonna say to the select board. So, yes.
Do we need to have a conversation first?
I think so. Yeah, before we, because we have to, yeah, so I think we should maybe plan for the October.
On the October agenda, so we can have a conversation before we go to the select board.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yep. Everybody good with it?
I mean, the town's been great with us trying to keep it clean and help us maintain it, and they've been wonderful. It's just a lot of work for the school.
Yeah. For a property that we don't use a whole lot.
Is it appropriate for, if people have ideas, that we shoot ideas to you?
That would be great, and I can kind of just get them together.
Gather those ideas in preparation for the October meeting.
That would be great.
Perfect.
So I think.
That was it for me.
Um, no, we have to do the, we have to do the audit.
Oh, yes. Then you need to do the audit, because they're coming in two weeks.
Yep. Okay. So, let me get my, yep. This is the most exciting part of any of the board meetings. So you guys, I think, all received this questionnaire in your packet from Plodzik and Sanderson, who are our accountants. And we have to publicly go through and read these questions aloud and answer them. So, screwed it up last year, so she gave me a copy. Okay, so, question number one, and so essentially, I'm gonna read these, and these are to all of the board members. So if you have any comments, feel free. Do you have any knowledge of fraud or suspected fraud affecting your entity? Yes or no? Going to say no unless anybody has an objection? Okay. Have you received any communications from employees, former employees, regulators, or others alleging fraud? No. Have there been any recent or unusual circumstances that might increase the risk of fraud? Not, I think that any of us are aware of. No. Have you or any related party of yours had any interest, direct or indirect, in any of the following transactions or pending or incomplete transactions since July 1st, 2024, to which the school district slash SAU or any retirement, savings, pension, or other similar plan was or is to be a party? So the first one is the sale, purchase, exchange, or leasing of property. And that doesn't, basically, because we were just talking about the pond, that's still a no? I mean, we don't personally have anything to do with that. Okay, cool. Just making sure. Okay. Receiving or furnishing of goods, services, or facilities? It's okay. Feel free to.
No.
I read this earlier.
Nope. You're okay.
Okay. Transfer or receipt of income or assets? Think, no? Other transactions? Okay. Number five, how does the school district slash SAU monitor for and respond to cybersecurity incidents, and are there incident response plans in place? And there are. We do have a plan, correct?
We do.
This was not, this was not in last month, last year?
No, it's new.
It's new, yep.
We have to know, given what's happened.
Yep. So do we, I know that we have a policy for this. Do we happen to know the policy number slash letters? I would think that would be the appropriate answer to that.
Yes, and I'm sure that the plan is lovely, but it's, and so we actually do some of that.
Yeah. Okay, to it. While she looks that up, yep, I'll keep going. Are there any documented disaster recovery and business continuity plans in place to address potential cybersecurity incidents? I hope so. Is the answer to that yes?
Yeah, it is yes. I was gonna grab Nick. I bet Nick knows the answers to some of these. Want me to grab him?
Sure. Okay.
Cause he and Dave work pretty closely.
Yeah, that would be great. And having been worked in an entity that has experienced this, yes, you need a, you need a plan in place. Malware, yep.
We've talked about it.
I'm guessing on the spelling of that, if we need to change that, we can. So same thing. So I'm guessing that the same policy that Mariah's looking for will answer number six, which is the business continuity plans? And I would look it up, but I have no internet tonight.
So he does a, he does a cybersecurity report card weekly by Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. I, I was asking about it.
Okay.
Yep.
Can you say that again, 'cause I need to write that down?
Sure can.
Sorry. So he does a weekly cybersecurity?
Yep. He does, he looks at it, yep. So he does a, yeah, he does a.
Weekly cybersecurity update?
He does a cybersecurity report card done on our network weekly by the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. That's basically to.
Security.
Yep, to ensure our network and our, we are protected from outside hackers.
Infrastructure.
Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency.
No. Almost. That was a lot of words.
Yep.
Okay. Yes. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, I think we are good. Number seven, does the board have any concerns about the integrity of the financial reporting process? I would say no. Does the board review comparative reports of estimated and actual revenues and appropriations and expenditures? Yes, we get those every month, and they are always available. How is the, quote, tone at the top, I think this is new also, communicated to employees? For example, expectations, ethics, values, and behavior?
We do orientation for all new staff. It'll be three days, and I am, they do one day with the principal, and then they do two days with me, where we are specifically going over policies, procedures, with a focus on specifically confidentiality, FERPA, HIPAA, ethics. with a focus on specifically confidentiality, perpa, HIPPA, ethics, conduct. All of that. That's done in August before the school year starts.
Okay, great. Have any fraud risk assessments been completed? No. Okay. How are fraud risks communicated to employees?
I think, I think Dave and his team is constantly, um, reminding people about phishing scams, about, um, any possibilities for.
Do they email regularly to the staff? Do they, I know a lot of organizations actually send, um.
Yep.
Their own phishing basically to see if you fall for it?
Yep.
Okay, so let's do that one. Why don't we do the D I H?
So a couple of things, so Dave does regular emails and then we do the, yeah, the policy to back.
Plus regular staff emails.
Yep.
Regular emails. Two. All staff. For each board member, please provide the, the, please provide below the years of service and a brief description of their background. For example, Jane Doe, five years on the board, teacher for 20 years at the high school and the local government. So I will go first because I'm writing it down. So mine will be Wendy Riga, four years of service, I believe. So they're saying how long you've been on the board? And background.
This is your second year, is it?
It is, yeah.
Yeah. Sounds about right.
And for background, I'm going to put children's library. Okay. So Molly, do you want to go next? Okay. All right. Candace, just give me a second to write your name down.
Education related when we're talking about experience?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of whatever you want. So you are, we'll put down one year of service. And so would you like to put for background? And I think it's fair if you were to say parent or what, whatever you want to put is fine.
Almost 13 years a parent. Yeah, 19 years attorney.
Okay. Okay. And Andrea, S H E P A R D? Okay, getting there. Okay. Thirty. Okay. Elliot is two Ls and two Ts.
Double L, double T, and an H on Sarah.
It is one of my talents from the library, it's learning how to spell people's names. Okay, years of service, one, and what would you like to put for your background?
Uh, professional, I don't know, parent?
Okay, sure.
Nice lady.
I should write that because that would be funny.
How many years?
Just this one, you're new, you're new at that, yeah.
Trying it out.
Okay, we are almost there. Okay, yes, we are there. Signed, dated, printed, and we will be done. And the nice thing is we only have to do this once a year. Okay, we are eighth. Okay. Okay. So I believe we have hiring and resignations is our next thing. Hiring, resignation, I thi, I think we are, do we have anything else before that?
No, no, there, there is a letter of resignation in your board pa, in your packet that follows this, that you can see, this is, and Dr. Campbell alluded to that when he mentioned he does have an opening for a case manager, so.
Do we need to accept that as a case manager? I know we do for teachers, but.
You do, as professional staff.
Okay, sure, just making sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
So we have a resignation from Sean McMahon, who is a special education, a special education case manager at Hampton Academy. Do I have a motion to accept his resignation?
I'll make a motion to accept Mr. McMahon's resignation.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Okay, and I believe we have policies next?
Yep.
All right, so these are all first reads, but I'm assuming some of these are on the list for discussion because some of them didn't appear to have.
Yep.
Changes to them, is that correct?
We, we can, um, if you can take, if you take a look at them, I, I don't know, I left these. We can take a look at them. So if you look at the naming of the districts, one through six, right, it's a six-page policy.
Yep.
You can see where there was changes. The question that we might want to talk about was the amount of.
Yep, on the last page?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's the only, that's the one that we might want to, providing a minimum of 20 years, that was.
So this is under, for the public, this is under guidelines for dedication of a building or facility area. And this is discussing naming, um, an area after a, a living school district employee, school district official, volunteer, or community leader provided a minimum of 20 years. Providing a minimum of 20 years has elapsed from the date of completion of service of the person to be honored. And it does currently say the board shall consider the amount of time that has elapsed from the date of completion of service of the person to be honored. Oh, I see, and it's just a change, changing it to 20 years specifically. Can I just ask what, is this from NHSBA? Is this something we, you would like us to institute? Where is this coming from?
It is coming from, it's coming from the New Hampshire School Boards Association.
Okay.
And, um, it's really, it's up to us at the end of the day.
I don't love it.
Yeah.
Personal opinion, we don't have to vote on it tonight, but I don't know. I think if you wait 20 years, who knows who the person is?
Right.
And you know, if you wait 20 years, then there are no longer any, let's say it was a teacher, no longer any students in the system that remember them.
Right. It's up to you what we want to do in terms of the number of years that has lapsed. I think that was, that was left blank.
Yeah. Okay.
What's the reasoning behind like such, I mean, I feel like I understand not wanting, I, I don't know, a smaller number of years, just like to make sure.
I don't know. I will, I will tell you, so that when it kind of passed this, it was random. I happened to be at a board, a board meeting that they had two years ago, I believe. And it was right after Rennie Cushing had passed away. And they literally, they named something, I can't remember, they named something after him and then they passed this policy like 10 minutes later. Which to me indicates there are going to be times when you are not going to want to wait 20 years. I personally like the idea that the board shall consider the amount of time.
So you, you could, if you want, put a period and just omit the red part, the red part. That's the other thing that you could do. So it would just be dedication of spaces or areas in a building or facility may be made using the same criteria. And then it ends with, you know, leader. And there would be no minimum, it could be at your discretion, it would obviously be a board vote. So that's the other way of dealing with it too.
I think I'd rather do that.
Yeah, same.
So let's do that.
Okay.
So let's make the change.
Okay, and then it's a first read, so we can actually vote on it next month, so.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Criminal history records check and background investigation. It looked like there was just one tiny change to that, is that right?
Yep, and it's required, it's a priority, it's required by law.
Oh, there is one extra one, the superintendent may share to the board in non-public.
Yep.
General information, but you cannot share the actual.
Report.
Report.
Yep.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, look at, do anybody have any questions?
We do not have any other policy gifted and talented.
So because we don't have anything, this is what we have, it's that, it's.
This was the only thing that we have?
That's it, yes. We don't, we don't have a gifted, a program, yeah, I know.
I didn't know that.
Right.
And now we don't.
Well, that was Claire Leach, how many, that was previous to me, that was before 2000.
Like I said, we did and now we don't.
Yep.
So are we looking to expand it? Was this something that came, I'm assuming that this was part of the conversation at the policy meeting?
So, yep, so we did, we talked about it. We don't have, um, there is not the staffing for it. It's something that if we wanted to budget for, we could, um, you know, and then we could put a program together, but you, we'd have to just, um, look at the policy as it relates to criteria. Where we don't have a person or program per se, the information, right, that was there really didn't pertain to us.
It harkens back to the days of junior high versus middle school.
That too.
And, and when you were in junior high, you did have the gifted and talented program. In middle school, again, with differentiated instruction being part of every program and every good part of teaching, um, there shouldn't have to be, or there shouldn't need to be this type of programming.
That was the thinking.
Ah, okay, that makes more sense.
That, that was really the thinking on it.
Okay.
You know?
And again, people bring up, well, we have an Inspire program and we have this program and so.
Basically, we do what we can to meet the needs of every student with the instruction that is of it.
Well.
Does that sound fair?
I think we try to provide a FAP, a Free and Appropriate Public Education.
Right.
Right? And with that said, it means meeting the needs of our students. And I think one of the things that we have been talking about even during the retreat was this whole idea, when we talk about the multi-tiered systems of support, we talk about, um, different learners. We talk about what about our kids who are above level, our kids who are below level? How is it that the classroom teacher is, right, differentiating daily so that those children get what, what they need? So that's really where your multi-tiered systems of support come in, your differentiation comes in.
And we've offered students the opportunity for, we still have a superior? No, what, what's the?
Extension?
No, the, the grade, the grading, the newish grading system.
Above grade level or?
Right. However, there are students who choose not to.
This is true.
Go for that.
This is true.
And so how do you?
And you have to do ex, you have to basically do extra, it's beyond, it basically meets expectations and then whatever's above exceeds.
There's like an exceeds at the elementary level and then in middle school you can receive a four.
Yep.
But I think we've discussed this before, that seems to be super subjective and varies really widely across teachers. So maybe that's something to revisit.
I'd echo what Sarah says, because as an, as a parent newer to the junior high and, or middle school in particular, it's not always clear when the next level or exceeds is available. And it does seem to vary across assignment, across a teacher, and across teams. That would be my only feedback on that. It's not totally clear, yeah.
So in looking at rubrics, which I am, again, I haven't seen it in every classroom, but the classrooms I've seen it in, a rubric should have a very clearly stated, um, set of cri, uh, criteria for what that four or what that superior, what that level should be. But again, my experience has been that many students, more than many students, choose not to go for, in middle school, choose not to go for that four. They choose not to go to do that extra work. So then, I guess, I guess, I don't know.
So essentially, if you, and it's, this kind of came in, I think we were eighth grade when, when the new system came in. So essentially, if you, if, as a student, if you decide not to do the extra, you do all of the regular assigned work and you do well on all of it, you get a three?
Right.
Okay.
Well, it's basically, if you're looking at, um, standards, are you meeting the standards? And I think that's really what we're looking for, right? We want kids to at least meet the standards.
Right, and parents hate that because parents all think that a three is a B. Has, in my, in my experience, that has, that has been what we have always, everybody felt like, you know, it's, it's easy. It looks, it looks like four is an A, three is a B, et cetera. I'm not saying we should change it.
But not in a competency-based grading system, right?
Exactly. And we've, we've unfortunately had this, we've unfortunately, again, I'm just letting you know, we have had this discussion more times than you can ever imagine.
Well, you probably, they, you, you know, because you have kids, right? But go ahead.
No, and I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Wendy. Um, I do agree, because I think there is, there's this jump that happens, happens from Marston over to the academy that I think can be a little confusing for parents. But I think the feedback, just in the community that I'm hearing, I don't know if Sarah would echo what I'm saying, but is, there's not always a lack, or there's not always a full sense of clarity for, at least for the parents, but also for the students that I'm hearing as to, at what times can they go for a four? What times can they not? What, what do they have to do to go for the four? And I don't know what the solution to that is, but this is just some general feedback, I guess, that I can offer.
And to that point, I have a kid who always will go for the four and I have one who's like, oh, I, I don't know how I got this four. I certainly didn't try for it, you know, like, so it's, it, there is, and you know, part of it, you can chalk up to maybe it's plastered right in front of their faces on the wall on a clear rubric, which certainly could be the case if I'm not in the room. But there is, there's also, I think, in Marston and in Center, parents are really acclimated to receiving a ton of context in the grading. There's a, a paragraph from every teacher and then that is absent also. So I think that without that context, it can be, um, you know, just, people get confused at that junction, I think.
Which, as you're transitioning, right, to more independence in the middle school, that does tend to happen. It's a, it's a conundrum. It is a conundrum for sure. I guess, I guess I would just maybe push more for the rubric to show more.
And your parent-teacher conferences.
Right.
That's.
Yeah.
That we now do twice.
Right, and, and that's, and that's, and unfortunately, just watching it, it's, that's another thing that, again, the middle school, you're pushing for independence, the kids are pushing you away, so the parents are going, okay, I won't go to your parent-teacher conference if you don't really want me to. You know, I, it's, it's a magical age. I love middle school.
It's something, that's for sure.
I know a lot of people don't, but I love middle school. But it's, it's a tough age and it's that transition, many things get lost and shuffled and confused and. So we just have to keep talking.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I would vote for next month that we could pull the program, the, what is this, IHBB? We, unless we have any specific plans to change anything on it, I would just, I don't think we need to vote on it. It's, it is in place and we can keep talking about it and, you know.
Yep.
That's all right, okay. So field trips, so we do have, just so the public knows, we have our regular field trip policy in front of us and, um, I believe Dr. Costa has also included school travel safety guidelines and we received those from Primex. And that's basically guidance from them on how to make school field trips safe.
Yeah, it's just from our, it's from our school insurance.
Yep.
So we'll just, we can include that in there.
We don't currently have any actual changes on this. Do we want to talk about changes? What is the plan for having this in front of the board?
I think we were, we were fine with what was said, we were going to add the Primex information.
Oh, gotcha, you want to basically tack this on.
Yeah, we, we did, I think that's what we, right, we decided, yep.
That is great.
And we'll, we'll just put it in format, um, with our head. And we'll, we'll just put it in format with our header, you know, like with the header.
Gotcha.
And we'll just, from Primex, and we'll include it in there.
Okay. I actually, from when we discussed this in the spring, one thing that I think that we need to be super clear about, so for instance, if you look about three-quarters, maybe three-fifths the way down the page, there's a line that says there should be an adult chaperone for every ten to fifteen students, parents should be called upon as extra chaperones, instead of asking other faculty members. That seems pretty clear to me, that that is intended to be for local field trips. And I think there needs to be a differentiation on some of these between local field trips and overnight out-of-the-area field trips, just so that it's clear. I know that a lot of parents brought that line up particularly, and I don't think that was how it was intended. We do not, at this point, bring parent chaperones on trips typically, with a few exceptions.
On the overnight trips.
On the, I'm sorry, on the overnight trips.
So we can maybe, we should differentiate that with overnight.
If we could, yeah, I think we.
Yep, I'll make a note of it.
Okay.
I think we need that call-out on the free time, too, because I think the kids are unchaperoned in their.
Correct.
Rooms at night.
Yes.
Which one is that? What line is that?
About four lines up.
Yep, four lines up. Students are not to be given unchaperoned free time while on a trip, but obviously, on an overnight trip, they have to be. So, yeah, same kind of thing, if we could just find a way to sort of indicate things that are specific to local trips.
Yep.
I think would be, would be useful for everybody.
Yep.
So maybe come back and we'll do a first read again next month on that, if we could. Maybe you guys can work through the language on it in the next policy meeting?
Yes.
That would be awesome.
Fill me where that local one is. I'm sorry, Sarah.
Well, so there were two different ones we were talking about.
I got this one there.
So this one right here, students are not to be given unchaperoned free time.
Yep, got it.
Yep. Okay. All right.
And I don't know, is sleeping considered free time?
Well.
Because that's really when they, that is, I don't know.
I, I thought the same. When we were, when I was reading through this three months ago, I thought the same thing. That was, I just think we should clarify.
On overnight?
On overnight field trips, that they will have a period of time when they are not chaperoned, essentially.
What about, like, seventh grade still goes to Canaby Lake, right?
Eh, no, actually, no. There were issues with scheduling, and it kind of killed it.
Okay, that was a trip where there was like a lot of unscheduled.
There was a lot of unscheduled free time, correct.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, if I'm correct in my experience with the sixth-grade environmental school, there is a chaperone.
Right.
That is in the cabin.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, so.
I very clearly remember.
Yep.
Girls and boys, and.
Yep.
It was, there is blue, and there is pink, and there is no purple.
Yep.
That was my rule.
But when you get them in a hotel.
I remember that very clearly.
Yeah, when you get them in a hotel.
But when you get them in a hotel.
It's a whole different ballgame, yeah. So, anyway, just, yeah. Anybody have anything else on that? Any comments, anything else they wanted to add to that? Or, I mean, like, so you guys are going to talk about it a little more offline, so.
Yep.
Good. All right. Automated external defibrillators. I am assuming that this is a required change based on, I don't know if it's based on state law, or why exactly the.
Yep.
The change. It does have a note that it's a priority.
Yep.
So, my only question on this, actually, is do all school staff receive training in AEDs and?
All safety, all safety team members do.
Okay, so not all employees?
Yep, so all schools have a safety team.
Okay.
And then all people on the safety team have AED training as part of their safety team training.
Interesting.
And we also do, yeah, the CPR as well.
Yep. And I know if you do CPR training in Hampton, you receive the AED training as part of it, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Would it be hard to have all staff do AED?
If they, do all staff do CPR training?
Nope, no, they're not required to.
I'm sorry, I thought it was, oh, okay.
But, I don't know. No, they don't. It's your safety team that does, so there's representation in each grade level in each area that does.
I would love to see every staff person receive. It's not, the AED is fine, but it's the, it's the rest of it. That's really what I would work out.
So the nurses will do, at the beginning of the year, they do the first aid training. They do talk about, you know, we have time for anybody who has a student that has an allergy, we'd go over how to administer the EpiPen. We do talk about anaphylaxis, we do blood-borne pathogen training. So we do a number of those trainings that are required. But as it relates.
CPR video.
What?
She said they watch a CPR.
I believe they watch a CPR video, because I think I'm in it.
Yes.
You're in the video?
Yes.
Who felt it? I don't know, it was, it was because I was pregnant at the time.
It was back in the day with, yeah, with Beth Bologna and all that.
That's hilarious.
Okay.
I know, you can encourage, but there's some people that don't feel comfortable.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
If we have the opportu, I think it's a missed opportunity to not have Hampton Fire come in and do CPR training for everyone.
So Hampton Fire already comes in and does stop the bleed.
Yep.
Yeah, it seems like.
Like, could we possibly tack something on to that? Like, maybe not full-blown CPR, but at least the training with the.
With the dummies.
The defibrillators.
I mean, the CPR training is an hour, hour and a half?
No, the CPR.
Including the AED?
The CPR training is six hours.
Yeah, I've done it.
Yep. No, it's two afternoons. No, it's two afternoons, and it's about two to three hours each. It's about six hours.
And I think it's more that, like I said, I think it's more that people, some people don't feel comfortable saying, I'd be willing to do that.
Sure.
I think they're just too nervous about saying.
I don't like that I have the certification. I hope I never need it.
Don't feel comfortable, right? And it has changed. There's a new number of compressions and whatever.
Yes.
Stayin' alive. It's, we're stayin' alive. It's more, it's few breaths, more chest compressions.
More chest compressions now.
They also make these things, as far as like it being invasive, right? They make these things where it's not actually mouth-to-mouth anymore.
Right.
It's like a cone.
Yeah.
It's different for babies, too, now.
I know.
Okay, so anyway, that one is good. Emergency plan for sports-related injuries and additional protocols for athletics participation. And there have been some changes to this. So you do have to be CPR-trained to supervise grades six through twelve.
Yep.
Actually, it looks like that's.
That's the one.
That's the one? Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so we will, nobody has any questions, we'll vote on that one next month.
All right. What I can do is I'll put a Google Doc together, Candace and Sarah will take a peek at it, we'll kind of wordsmith it.
Awesome.
All right.
Okay. Minutes we need to review, I did actually have, wait, I've got a note somewhere, there was one change that I noticed, which was, let me find the page, is number ten, which is, so page five, under policy review, next, like, down at the bottom, it says the motion was seconded by Ms. O'Neill, except that Ms. O'Neill was not at that meeting. So I am guessing that it was probably Sarah. Just change that. Anybody else have any more changes or anything they noticed? All right. Do I have a motion to approve? Don't make me point at people. Molly, would you like to make a motion to, oh, you weren't here. I'm sorry, it's the, it's the three of us, no wonder she was looking at me like I was crazy. She's like, no, I don't want to make that motion, thanks.
For the minutes?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting on June 10th.
Okay.